We call this regular meeting of the Lompoc City Council for Tuesday, December 17th, to order. We have the roll call, please.
Council Agency Member Rouget.
Here.
Lingal.
Here.
Durham.
Present.
Mayor Protem Vice Chair Martner.
Present.
Mayor Chair Siminski.
Present. A couple of weeks ago, John Lynn gave me a copy of a document and suggested I use it tonight for the invocation. And it's kind of lengthy. John, I've cut it about in half, but in place of the invocation tonight, (cough) excuse me, I'd like to read George Washington's 1789 Thanksgiving proclamation. And even though we're past Thanksgiving, we're still in the season where we're being thankful and we're preparing for Christmas, and I think it's really appropriate. Whereas it is the duty of all nations to acknowledge the providence of Almighty God, to obey His will, to be grateful for His benefits, and humbly to implore His protection and favor, and whereas both houses of Congress have by their joint committee requested me to recommend to the people of the United States a day of public thanksgiving and prayer to be observed by acknowledging with grateful hearts the many and single favors of Almighty God, especially by affording them an opportunity peaceably to establish a form of government for their safety and happiness. Now therefore, I do recommend and assign Thursday, the 26th day of November next, to be devoted by the people of these states to the service of that great and glorious being who is the beneficent author of all good that was, that is, and that will be, that we may then unite in rendering to Him our sincere and humble thanks for His kind care and protection of the people of this country. And also that we may then unite in most humbly offering our prayers and supplications to the great Lord and ruler of nations, and beseech Him to pardon our national and our personal transgressions, to enable us all, whether in public or private stations, to perform our several and relative duties properly and punctually, and to render our national government a blessing to all the people by constantly being a government of wise, just, and constitutional laws, discreetly and faithfully executed and obeyed. This was given under my hand at the City of New York, the third day of October, AD 1789, George Washington. Now if you will, I'd like to ask you to stand and recite the Pledge of Allegiance with me.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Next on the agenda is the City Administrator/Executive Director's Status Report. Information only.
Mr. Mayor, City Council, audience and viewers, tonight's City Administrator's Status Report includes four reports submitted by staff. First, the Lompoc Fire Department update outlines the department's activities for the month of October. The department responded to 285 calls, of which 14 were fire-related, 191 rescue and medical emergencies, and 80 other, with 48 overlapping calls. Second is a status report from Senior Civil Engineer Mike Luther outlining construction progress of the Dick Dewey's Community Center and Senior Center. He reports to date the prime contractor, AWI Builders, has mobilized their construction trailer, secured the site with temporary fencing, completed approximately 85 percent of the site demolition, and has been submitting required project documentation to the city's construction manager Harrison Associates. There have been no extra work requests, no contract change orders approved or requested, and the project is on schedule. Third, the Community Development Director Arlene Pelster submitted an update report on property located at 113-115 South H Street, outlining progress to date, working with property owners to address code violations of the property, and having secured a structural engineer to conduct an assessment of the property. And lastly is an update report also from Community Development Director Arlene Pelster, summarizing economic development activities to date, and Ms. Pelster is available to report on these activities, and I'll invite her to the podium at this time.
Okay, thank you. On the Old Town Structural Assessment, the project is proceeding. I have the good news that all the interested property owners have signed right-of-entry permits. We have three test inspections set up for next week, including the building at 113-115 South H Street. They do have a scheduled appointment, so we're going to be moving forward on this. The website, as you know, we are redesigning our website to make it more dynamic and updated, and our Information Systems Division, especially Alan Erland behind me, has done quite a bit of work on setting up several options for the homepage and samples of redesigned department pages, and those are currently under review, so we're making progress on that. With regard to the Economic Development Director job description, the Human Resources Division is completing this work. When finished, it will be scheduled for council's review. And as council had directed, we followed up with speaking with Bill Carney from the CALEd team to go over our progress so far, and I explained to him that we had, the council had adopted a resolution identifying economic development as a priority, that we've begun working on updating our website, and that council's directed staff to develop a job description for the Economic Development Director position. Mr. Carney indicated he was pleased and impressed. He said he didn't expect us to be this far along in the process. He was especially pleased that council had taken the first step in adopting a resolution. He said, interestingly enough, a lot of cities skipped that step, so he really felt it showed our commitment to an economic development program that will be more effective. And as councilists has directed, we will continue to be in contact with Mr. Carney. And the final item is that on November 10th, the Planning Commission recommended that the Redevelopment Agency conduct an economic vitality survey, and staff will schedule consideration of that recommendation for council's review probably after the first of the year. And that concludes my report.
Thank you. Are there any questions of Mrs. Pelster? Mr. Lingal?
I just have a comment. I want to thank Ms. Pelster for the reports and congratulate you on saying on top of these items, and I just thank you again.
Thank you.
Ms. Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have a question regarding the website. I assume that this is all being done internally by our IT department, correct?
Yes.
Is there anywhere where we can find out what is that is being done with the website? I mean, I do know that at one point in time, there were ideas that were proposed during those CALEd workshops regarding testimonials, list of successes, or no successes, or whatever. Where can we review and how can we provide input, whether it's from the council members or the public, as to what they would like to see on the website?
Okay. People could email either Mrs. Barcelonah or me, or they can call. Right now, it's not on the city's website yet because we're still in the in-house redesign phase, and then it will be the responsibility of my department to populate the economic development page, and that's where I would see us putting in, like you said, testimonials and that type of information that was recommended by the CALEd team.
Also, I would like to suggest that it would be a good idea, we can contact some of the local organizations that might be interested in having some input in what should go on the city website, for example, the Chamber of Commerce and so forth, just to get a general idea of what the public would like to see. There might be some good ideas in there.
Yeah, once we've got it redesigned, I do see, I'd like to send it to CALEd and see what they think, and like you said, the Chamber and to interested groups.
And you might want to shoot it over here at one point in time as a presentation during the council.
Yes, okay. That's a great idea. Thank you.
Sure, bye.
Any other comments or questions? That concludes your report.
Mr. Mayor, I'd like to take this opportunity to thank you, council members, Anne Rouget and Tony Durham, for your work and commitment on behalf of the city and our community. It's been a pleasure working for you, serving you, and on behalf of the City of Lompoc and staff, we sincerely thank you.
Thank you. Are there any other council requests or announcements tonight? Mr. Lingal?
Yes, Mr. Mayor. Just one quick comment. This being December 7th, the 69th anniversary of Pearl Harbor, I wonder if you would indulge us in just a moment of silence for the, those that gave their lives at Pearl Harbor? Please bow your head. Thank you, and may they rest in peace.
Thank you, Mr. Lingal. Mr. Durham?
Well, on a lighter side, I'm surprised Mr. Lingal didn't want to mention the parade, but since he was the dog and pony show, I guess that's why. But we had a great parade, Christmas parade this year. I want to thank everybody that was involved, especially since that Auto Center that was out there in force, driving and donating their vehicles and everything. On a more tender note, the first council meeting that I attended, or that I was, after I was sworn in, there was a young couple sitting in the front row, and I miss those people. I'm not sure what happened, but Mr. and Mrs. Lawrence, when Mr. Lingal spoke about Pearl Harbor, all day today, I remembered Mr. Lawrence being in the Marine Corps and sacrificing a lot. So, thank you, Bob.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. The next item is oral communications on any subject that anyone in the public would like to talk about that is city business. And it can be an item that's on the agenda for later on tonight, or it can be any item that's not on the agenda. Ask you to come up and observe the lights, you know how it works, five minutes, and let us know what you think. Do we have anyone for oral communications? Oh, that's a first. Wow.
Can we reiterate this, Mayor? We've never had this many people in the audience, and they sit. Boy, what a great night.
We'll close this oral communication. You missed your opportunity.
Welcome back from the break. Everybody get cake? Come on, you guys, do you have cake? If we have cake, next council meeting, will you come back? All right. We'll now call back to order the council meeting on December 7th, 2010, and for the Council Redevelopment Agency Board Meeting. Clerk, will you read the roll once again, please?
Council Agency Member Lingal.
Here.
Starbuck.
Present.
Costa.
Present.
Mayor Protem Vice Chair Martner.
Present.
Mayor Chair Lynn.
The invocation and Pledge of Allegiance were held earlier, and we will now move on to some thoughts from the council members. This time, the mayor gets to speak first for some unknown reason, but it was on the script the staff was nice enough to help me with. So as my first official act, I would like to move for a council workshop on Tuesday, December 14th, with a closed session at 6:00 PM to allow the city attorney to brief new council members on prior closed-session issues, and a workshop at 7:00 PM to allow council members to talk about changes to the city of Lompoc. I additionally move that the economic development shall be the first subject, followed by other subjects which council members shall submit to the city administrator tomorrow or the next day, quick as we can to give her time. And I'd entertain a second.
I'll second that.
Does the council wish to discuss this? Any discussion on the part of the council?
I just wanted to note that the next evening of Wednesday, December 15th, will be the LAFCO meeting, and so if we need to push that over to an additional night, we'll have to schedule that on Tuesday night.
Would the members like to discuss a rollover night now, so we have that ahead of time? Councilmember Martner?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I'd like to make it and put it in the public record that I did receive a letter from the mayor stating wanting to have this meeting with a whole bunch, with a whole list of various different subjects that are of great interest to this city. I have not responded to the letter, and I plan to only make comments at the public, in a public meeting, because I do believe that whenever we want to talk about anything that pertains us all, it should be done in the public, whether it's a request, not just a position, but it should be done in the public. So, having said that, I'm aware that the mayor wants to have a workshop on December 14th on subjects that the public does not know about. We know about it because we were informed in this letter, but I believe that if we want to maximize, if we really want to maximize public input, that is what you think about these subjects, that the public needs to be informed before the workshop in some way, and I don't know exactly what would be the proper procedure to do so. I don't know if, at this point in time, we need to specify what the agenda of the workshop is, so the public is informed. Again, I've been in this council for two years, and I've been many times heard repeatedly, we don't know what the council is talking about. We haven't had time to even get those reports, so why don't we give the public some time so they can understand what the subjects of discussion will be? So I would like to request that we put this somewhere in the public record, what we're going to talk about on December 14th.
Thank you. I agree with you completely. The letter was an effort on my part with the assistance of the city attorney and the city administrator to craft something general enough in nature that it would get us all thinking about having a meeting, and it certainly wasn't an attempt to conceal anything from the public, but rather to get us all going in the same direction.
So, Mr. Mayor, can we list what is it that we're going to talk about in December 14th meeting? I think that would be, you know, good, so we have it on the minutes, so the public is aware of it, and we have proper reporting of it.
I guess my suggestion would be that we would all submit our topics to the city administrator, and that she could then publish those in the agenda for that meeting, and that way the public would have an idea of what we're going to talk about and realize that this is a workshop and not a decision-making session, but more an opportunity to talk about things in an open environment where we can speak freely and share ideas.
So there won't be decision-making?
I, my understanding is that we could not make a decision in a workshop, other than the decision that we want to go forward on something and carry it forward to a future decision. Is that my correctly understanding what you told me once before?
It all depends on how the workshop is agendized.
Okay, from my standpoint, I would, my concept was that we were just going to talk about topics, and those topics that we felt strongly about, we would instruct the staff to bring them back to us in a regular council session for decision-making, but, you know, I'm open to anything that the members would like.
So, Mr. Mayor, I would like to make, just to clarify and make sort of the process and the rules kind of, you know, set. We will submit subjects of interest to the city administrator, and they will be agendized for the December 14th meeting. The public will get to know about those subjects, I guess, 72 hours before, when the agenda gets published. During that meeting, we will discuss these topics. If there is any agreement from the council members, we will make a motion to agendize it for a future agenda, and in that time, there will be a decision. Does that make sense? Is that...
That was my concept. I mean, you know, that's at the pleasure of the council, so I'm certainly willing to do it any way the council would like.
I would like to solicit comments from the other council members.
Councilman Lingal?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. I have not read the letter that was distributed, I, so I have not made my list yet either. My understanding, from what I'm hearing tonight, is that we all have ideas that we'd like to see the city working on in the future. For example, we've heard for the past two years now, code enforcement, graffiti, getting rid of dilapidated buildings. I'm assuming this will be one of the things that we want to set on the agenda, make sure that we as a council agree that this is a priority. Economic development, we've been talking about for two years. I'm assuming that we as a council, if we agree that this is a priority, we'll put this on the list of things. Code enforcement, economic development...
And on and on.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, blurring, blanking. But this is an idea that, and the public naturally, they have other ideas as well, so they will be able to submit to us. Take, for instance, we have our list that we've been talking about for the past two years. The council members, or the new council members have been talking about their ideas for the past several months during the campaign. We get that on there. There may be someone in the public that says, you know what, why not do something with, I'll use an example, David Grill, he's run for city council, and I think he has a great idea of increasing our bike and hiking trails in this community. This is not on our agenda right now. Maybe Mr. Grill wants to come to this meeting and see if we will prioritize that, so getting input from the community. So this is my idea of this workshop. I'm assuming, is this what we're thinking of?
I think that's exactly what I was thinking of.
Okay. So no decisions being made, other than just making a list of things that are, that we want to talk about, what the public wants to talk about, then bring it back to the council, and that time, maybe we prioritize and agendize those, or agendize it to prioritize them.
Well, I believe at that meeting, we could prioritize things too, if we chose to.
Okay, well...
What do we want to get after first? And, you know, and some things, as I commented in the letter, some things require a full resolution, and some of them really just require consensus at the council, and would be, would be more simply done at a council meeting by going, by moving through those rather, rather even more easily.
And the other thing that I was drawing a blank with, that's why I was, was the idea of making our business, our city more business-friendly.
Yes.
We've been hearing this, so I'm hoping that will, well, if no one else does, I'm assuming we all will, put it on there to prioritize that. So that's my idea, and that's what I, Ms. Martner, I think that's what I, my assumption would, for the meeting would be.
Clerk, you haven't said anything yet. Sorry, Ashley.
I think we need to set a second date. Like Ashley had just said, there's the LAFCO meeting on Wednesday, which we intended to go into rollover, but we would need to have, it's not going to be something we're going to accomplish in that one meeting. It's probably going to take several meetings, so I think we should probably in advance schedule them.
Okay. Ashley?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would also like a deadline for council members to submit, I have yet to submit my list as well, so a deadline for us to submit to Ms. Barcelonah to give her apt time to make a comprehensive list. If she can give us a date, that would be great.
City Administrator, what would be convenient for you? It's a week from today. You can say tomorrow, it's okay. As long as it's tomorrow at 5:00.
It truly is tomorrow. Close the business tomorrow.
Okay.
May I ask a question, Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I understood Mayor Protem Martner just say that she wanted to have on the agenda the items that you put on your list, so if I'm understanding right, you're going to submit something to Ms. Barcelonah, and then she's going to take all that stuff and just put it on the agenda?
A topic list, I think, is what we're all talking about. Is that correct, Ms. Martner?
Again, it's still, not quite understanding what the purpose of it. I mean, we can do a laundry list, okay, and we can have, each of us can have 10 things, 11 things, and we'll go about it and talk about it without really being in the context. So perhaps for the sake of time, and also again, I think it's important to have participation from the public in each and every one of these laundry list items, and there may be many of them. It's going to take a long time. So would it be more of a topical, if we could just pick the topics? For example, code enforcement, for example, economic development, you know, what other topics? If the city administrator were to be able to condense all of the council members laundry list, okay, and put them in a topic form, it may be better, and it may be more efficient to run a meeting that way, and then the council can discuss and get into some level of detail, and then depending on what happens there, there might be a motion to put it as an agenda item at a later time. So is that make more sense?
I don't think we have a legal issue when we're there to do these. Okay. So yes.
So is it council's pleasure to just have main topics, and then that gives you freedom to be able to, you know, discuss at your pleasure, you know, beyond the main topic?
So if we had main topics, and then underneath those, you separated each individual council member's sub items to that topic, that would be, we would be adequately noticed? Does that work for you? Councilmember Martner?
Yes, thank you.
Thank you very much. Okay, so we have, sorry, missed one.
No, that's okay. I think we'll be surprised that the laundry list is really not that large. I think we're going to find that there are a dozen, maybe 20 items that we all feel, and the public feels, that are important, because we know, and the public knows, that if we put 50 items as priority for this council to accomplish in the next year, nothing will get accomplished. So I think we have to make sure that the items that we put on this are very succinct and very clear, that they are to drive this city forward in the next year to two years. But if we put on everything to making the sidewalks pink on Lavender Street, and, you know, so we have to make sure, so I think we'll find out that this list is not going to be as extensive as everyone thinks it's going to be.
Okay, so we have a motion in a second. Is there any further comment? Oh, wait, we did not establish the follow-on date. What's the pleasure of the council?
I would say that, given the holidays coming, you know, again, we're talking about public comment. We do have a regular council meeting coming on December 21st. We're talking about December 14th, which would be the other Tuesday, so every Tuesday we will be having a meeting between now and, I don't know when, New Year's? Whatever. The point is, is that I think I would like to leave the follow-up date to be determined after, well, we see what happens with the first workshop.
Everybody good with that? Okay. So we have a motion in a second. Should we just have consensus on there, or do we need a vote? Consensus is fine? Everybody good with it? Okay. So we'll all be here on Tuesday, and you'll all be here too, I hope. The closed session will be at 6:00, and the council meeting will be at 7:00. Okay.
Correction, it's not a council meeting, it's a workshop, correct?
It's a council meeting in the technical sense, but the business will be conducted in the form of a workshop.
Correct. Okay, as my second official act, I'd like to recognize Larry Bean and the facility's staff for their creative solution to a longtime problem, which is our old twist timer for a speaker's timer, and I had asked them to come up with some new jazzy electronic version, and they found a way to do it for free, which we are now going to get a live demonstration of on the screen, we hope. Sort of. There we go. And, oh, is this cool, or what? Yes. And at the end, the gong will sound. We just don't quite know what the gong is going to be yet. We just don't quite know what the gong is going to be yet. Where it will, the first speaker tonight will get to experience it. Oh, here we go. And that's when your time is up, and we'll ask you to conclude. And I know our city clerk will be sad that she no longer has to exercise her wrist on the, on our good old timer. Okay. The only other question that everyone has asked me is, what was I doing with that wooden box and what I took out of it? And that is our family Bible from 1767, on which I placed my hand. Now, would some of the newly seated council members like to have, make a statement? Ladies first, I think. Councilmember Costa?
I would just like to give a big thanks to the public and the community for giving me this gracious opportunity to serve. I'm looking forward to the next four years, and I plan on working very hard. And all I ask is that you please be patient.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Shortened to the point. Thank you. Let's get our appointments done.
Okay, and our two returning council members, would you like to have something to say? Councilmember Marner?
I would like to welcome everybody to the council, and I'm looking forward to work with all of you for the next two years.
Thank you.
I echo what Councilmember Marner said. It's, I look forward to working with the three of you. Congratulations. And we certainly have the work cut out for us, but I think we have a team that's, we've already got to know each other pretty well during the last six months. And I'm very comfortable and confident that we'll be able to accomplish what we want to. So, welcome.
Well, from my standpoint, I've said to everyone who's asked me that I think we have enough commonality, that we have a communication level, but more importantly, we have enough difference that we all bring something else to the table, which is valuable when you're making decisions. So I'm super enthusiastic. City clerk, do we have any written communications to place in the record? None tonight? Okay. We have one more round of oral communications. We have two minutes to address the council with our new timer.
Mayor Lattin, council, just a little monkey wrench for you. I believe APCD does not set up for an alternate. So I guess if you wanted Dirk to go as a ride-along, that would be fine, but I don't know that he'd have any official duty.
Ride-along.
We, I discovered that when I was interested in going on that. And I, for two years, actually went down to the meetings and had no job. And then an opportunity came to be the representative for the city, and then I filled that spot. Most, like APC, or SBAG and the rest of them have an alternate, but APC doesn't, the last that I knew. So you might need the city clerk to call and see if that's still in effect. And as a member of the advisory council and the executive committee for the area agency and IA gene, I would like to welcome Mr. Lingle to our meeting. We meet the second Friday of each month at the government center in Santa Maria. We have individual committee meetings at 9:30 till about 10:15, and then the regular joint meeting at about 10:15 to 12:00. So invite you to come.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Skyler. Since you're there, I have a question. I'm assuming it's 9:30 a.m. It just says 9:30.
Correct.
Okay, good.
Some of the aides there, I don't think they would make it to 9:30 at night.
Ride-along, huh? Sounds like you're on police duty now, Dirk. Yeah, absolutely.
Mayor, members of the council, Ralph Harmon. A remark came up earlier, and I think I heard the same remark probably every council meeting about buying things here in Lompoc. And I know it's dear to our mayor's heart. However, I think the merchants of Lompoc need a little training. Over the past couple of weeks, I've tried to purchase four items right here in Lompoc. I was referred to Santa Maria by one merchant. I was referred to the internet by another merchant. I was able to find one of the items here in town. It wasn't what I wanted, but it was close enough, so I did buy it here. And the other item, I was also referred to Santa Maria. So when you say we don't buy, our consumers aren't buying in Lompoc, well, we sure as heck try, but maybe the merchants need to figure out what the Lompoc residents want. And maybe then we have a little more tax revenue here. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon. Anyone else has a oral communication? Okeydoke. Thank you for that. Are there any other council or agency requests, comments, or meeting reports? Who got there first?
Cecilia, you did.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I would like to clarify, the APCD board does have an alternate. And it has had a list for my 10-year there. And Councilmember Starbuck is my alternate at this time. And I'll be happy to have him ride along if he likes. They're really boring meetings, okay?
If Mr. Skyler wants to go, please.
Well, he's not a council member, unfortunately, so.
Fake it.
So I guess that just makes you a carpetbagger now. Councilmember Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just one more quick comment on Pearl Harbor Day. I had the pleasure, my wife took me to Hawaii for the past two weeks. And one of the reasons I wanted to go is I had always wanted to go see Pearl Harbor. And I just want to, if you have not had the opportunity to go to Hawaii and see Pearl Harbor, make a point of it. It was one of the most emotional things I've ever done in my life. My father was in the submarine service. They have a submarine there. He told me stories about the cramped conditions that they had in submarines during World War II. The stories that he told me were nothing like when I got inside that submarine and looked at the cramped conditions that our servicemen served in. So I just, I'll always remember my trip to Pearl Harbor. And I was glad it was happening near the 69th anniversary. Thank you.
Well, I can say, having been to the Arizona Memorial, it was a very emotional experience, and I will never forget being there. Any other announcements from the council? Okeydoke. And then we would adjourn to the meeting of the 14th, correct? So we are adjourned to the meeting of the 14th with a opening time of 6:00 for a closed session, followed by 7:00 for our other session. Thank you very much.
We have, under council requests, also an item tonight, a status report in the timelines regarding the request for proposal. Laurel, you want to ask Jeff States to come forward on that?
At this time, I'd like to invite acting fire chief Jeff States.
Good evening, mayor and council. I'm here tonight to give the status report and the timeline of the RFP. My report will be broken down into three sections. The first one will be the status of the RFP since September 21st. The second portion is the timeline. And then the third portion will be the status of the RFP as of today. So I'll start at the council budget workshop, September 21st of this year. Our management service director, Mr. Wilkie, provided counsel with page 17 of the RFP entitled, "Proposed Operations by the District of the Revised Draft Proposal for the County to Provide Fire Protection Services to the City of Lompoc." And I always call page 17 the money page, because that has all these figures in it. On that, Mr. Wilkie noted the county estimated the 2010-11 annual fee for services totaled $3,869,206, compared to the city's annual budget of $3,338,866 for fire service. At this meeting, the city administrator provided counsel and update, noting that county executive office was to agendize the revised RFP requesting direction from the county board of supervisors. A revised draft proposal dated October 12th, which the county submitted as a final draft, was received. This proposal revised the annual fee to $3,825,006 in the first year of the contract. This revised amount is $486,140 greater than the city's current budget for fire services. And now we'll talk about some of the financial aspects of it. In reviewing the revised proposal and city obligations, the following additional costs should be considered when evaluating the contract proposal. And these are from Mr. Wilkie, our management service director. Conversion costs to be paid to the county are estimated at $22,467 per year for five years. In addition to these costs, the city would be obligated to pay a one-time cost at the time the contract is executed. These costs include the prepayment of lease obligations, which is on our, two of our fire trucks, which would amount to approximately $316,000. Because the condition of the contract is to transfer all fire equipment free of related debt. Also, the execution of the contract would effectively separate all fire department employees from city employment at a date certain. The separated employees would have earned compensation from the city that would not have been paid to them by that date. Assuming the date would have been June 30, 2010 of this year, the value of the earned but unpaid compensation would have been $405,960. That's their compensation, holiday vacation, and other items. Therefore, a total one-time cost due at execution of the contract to transfer the fire services from the city to the county would have been approximately $726,000. This is just an estimate of additional financial liability that the city would incur, even if the city fire services were provided by Santa Barbara County. And now we'll do the timeline that was also requested. January 19, 2010, Councilmember Lingle, with the consensus of the city council, requested staff to submit a request for proposal to the county of Santa Barbara to provide fire protection services for the city of Lompoc. And the intent of this request was to determine whether a budgetary savings would be realized through consolidation of fire services. January 28 of this year, the city administrator sent a letter to the CEO of the county inquiring about the feasibility of Santa Barbara County providing contract fire protection services to the city. The city administrator received confirmation from the county confirming receipt of our request, as well as advising the request would be agendized on the county board of supervisors' agenda for the meeting of February 16. And this is to request board approval and authorization to begin working, with county staff to review and study a proposal to determine if it would be feasible for them to provide fire service protection to the city of Lompoc. On April 23, the city administrator received a letter from the county CEO dated April 9, along with a draft proposal to provide fire protection services to the city, and this was dated April 2. June 10 of this year, city administrator, management service director, and the Lomp, director, pardon me, and the Lompoc fire chief met to discuss the county's draft proposal. The city team met with Santa Barbara County Fire Chief on June 17, on which date both the city and county staff believed there was more work to be done on the proposal before it could be presented to the respective governing bodies. And the city administrator, Ms. Barcelona, sent the CEO of the county a letter advising of county and city staff's decision. On August 6, the city fire staff, we received notice the county staff met and agreed to move forward with a request for proposal. The proposal was to be revised and forwarded to the board of supervisors for approval sometime in October. The proposal was agendized for the board's meeting of October 26. However, the board unanimously voted to have the item withdrawn. To date, we have not received a final response from the county to the city's request for proposal. Now, my summary, that will be what, how the proposal stands at this date. We know that the Santa Barbara County CEO retired November of this year. The county board of supervisor hired Ms. Waller as the county chief executive officer. The city administrator and county CEO recently discussed the RFP to provide fire protection services for the city. Discussion ensued related to the county's budgetary shortfall, including the county fire department budgetary shortfall of $5.5 million. At the county board supervisors' meeting of October 26, they directed that the RFP be withdrawn from consideration until the county receives confirmation the city is still interested in receiving a response to its initial proposal. In closing, I would like to read the last two paragraphs of the letter dated December 3 of this year that was sent to the city administrator from the county CEO. And in it, she says, "As currently proposed, the cost of providing fire services to the city is estimated at $4.4 million for the fiscal year 2010-2011. This estimate is based on certain assumptions regarding salaries and benefits, indirect overhead rate, and proposed county sharing of costs. Any changes in these assumptions, especially regarding salaries and benefits, will lead to an increase in the proposed cost of providing services to the city. Should the city provide confirmation to the county that it wishes to continue discussions on this matter, county fire will update the board of supervisors on the proposal. Given the magnitude of the upcoming budget, it is unknown whether the board of supervisors will authorize the submittal of a revised proposal."
That's the end of my report. If you have any questions?
Thank you. Any questions at this time, Chief State? Mr. Durham?
Chief States, I just have a couple of questions. On the proposal, on the cost in the third paragraph from October 12, the 3.8, is that, obviously, that wasn't taken into consideration that we're probably going to be down three firemen, three firefighters by that time? I mean, by the time we get to a proposal? Would that make a difference?
For the city, you mean?
For us, for the city of Lompoc. Because we know we're losing one firefighter to Santa Maria, and possibly two more to Santa Barbara.
No, this cost wasn't with anybody.
But I mean, would it bring, would it bring that cost factor closer together? That's what I'm asking.
That one, I could honestly answer. I'd have to talk to the management service director.
Okay, and then on, then on the 6th of August, why, do we have any explanation why the board of supervisors chose not to address it?
No.
They didn't, they didn't, okay, geez. Okay, thank you.
Rumor, but.
Rumor, yeah, I don't need, yeah, there's enough of that in Lompoc.
I would imagine Mr. Pomoni would stop me before I threw a rumor out there.
Councilmember Durham, I think I can answer that. In my conversation that I had with county CEO Shonda Waller, the discussions were focused on that there were budgetary concerns. And, you know, that was considered enough concern to pull that proposal from the agenda.
Thank you.
Ms. Marner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Regarding Councilmember Durham's question that we might be possibly down three firefighters, my understanding, and correct me if I'm wrong, I thought that the proposal is based on a service, not necessarily on a head count. And if that, I mean, wasn't this contract supposed to provide a certain service to the city? Whether they can do it with X number of firefighters or Y number of firefighters? You know, without knowing the specifics, it's really hard to know whether it makes any difference, right?
Well, in the county's proposal, it actually, they specify the staffing levels.
Okay, so if they specify the staffing levels, it would be, they would have to hire three firefighters to come here if we are, if they're going to agree to a certain staffing level. The whole thing is that we don't have a proposal with very specific points of what is it that they're going to deliver and for how much money, right? And if we want to get that, we would have to make an official request. Give us that proposal with X number of dollars attached to a specific services. Is that really, I mean, right now, we're throwing numbers of 3.5, and, but we don't really know what we're getting.
No, in their draft proposal, the one that was dated October 12, 2010, talking.
No, in their draft proposal, the one that was dated October 12th, 2010, talking with the, because we met with county staff also, fire department, this was their final proposal that they were taking to the board. And he only had to wait, they had, Chief Dyer had to wait to give it back to the city.
But they decided to withdraw the proposal for some unknown reason, right?
Yes. But staffing levels in here were, on page 17, showed what the staffing would be.
So if we were to make a request for a proposal, it might be a totally different thing than what has been discussed.
Possibly could be, I'm not sure.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Rouge?
I realize we're not going to get a chance to vote on that, the outgoing council members, but after looking at this, and it seems clear to me that the county is in dire financial straits, just like the city of Lompoc is. And even just the fire department is down $5.5 million in their budget in the county. I don't think it would behoove our city to go forward with this proposal at this time. And I would strongly urge the new members of the council to consider that because we have to look at our city budget and get that taken care of. That's the first priority, I think. So I'm going to strongly urge that. I don't know what cloud I have, I don't have any, but I think to be more fiscally conservative and to look at what's happening with the county and then what we need to do in the city as far as our budget goes, I don't think this is a viable proposal. And I think we should stop it right now before we put the county through this process anymore.
Thank you. The item on the agenda tonight was to receive the informational status report of where we are up to date and to give appropriate direction to the staff as to where we'll want to continue. That is action which I think the public has a right to comment on. So even though there's no public comment, period, at this time, I'd like to open it for the public if there's anything that, that they have to say to us. If you, if you'd limit your remarks at this time to that subject, we'll now open up, with the consent of the council, we'll now open this for public comment. Does anyone like to speak on the item before us?
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, Ralph Harmon, Lompoc. I have to agree with Councilperson Rouge on this. We need to put this to rest and terminate the procedure that's going through. It's quite obvious that the county is not interested, and obviously, the preliminary figures are showing that they're not going to be able to do it any more reasonably than we can. In that case, if we put it to rest now, maybe we can start devoting energies to finding a solution to the problem with our fire department here instead of spending a lot of energy on something that's not going to happen. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Harmon.
Yes, Dwayne Hohm doll from Lompoc Council, mayor. I agree with Mr. Harmon. I think one thing, too, if the council, if the city of Lompoc has $485,000 to give the county, why can't you just give it to the fire department and bring them up? You know, if you're going to cost you that much more to run the project with the county, and then you're laying off three, and I haven't heard that the council is cutting staff by three anyway, so I think the three leaving are going to probably be rehires on there, and the fire department is short already. So I think that the county doesn't want, they don't have the money, and I think the smartest thing that this council could do right now is say, "Tank it." Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hohm doll.
Kyle Dodds, President, Lompoc Firefighters Association. I think we need to understand a very, very important point here. We've spent three years between the fire unions and the fire departments, on and off, it's been about three years, we've been working to get this viable proposal over to the city, and now we're talking about scrapping it before we actually were about two inches from seeing it. So I don't quite understand why we're talking about scrapping something that we actually haven't seen, okay? We need to be very clear here that a vote to receive it or ask the county to give it to us is not any kind of vote to sell off the fire department, it's not any kind of vote to get rid of this fire service, it's a request to see the proposal for fire protection services from the Santa Barbara County Fire Department. You know, and it may not be, we need to understand it's increase in service, increase in medics, it's a long-term cost savings, if you look at it. The city is getting out of a lot of liabilities that they are currently tied to with us. As far as the 5.5 million, we need to understand, they're 5.5 million shortfall in the fire service, but the annual fire department budget for the city, or county of Santa Barbara is $52 million. There are the city of Lompoc's bi-annual budgets, the same as the fire department's annual budget. So we need to understand, it's all, you know, in percentages here, and they may be a little short, yes, they are like the rest of us, but at the same time, it's a very well-run, very positive department. The, I would hate to see us do all this work, all the meetings, all the blood, sweat, and tears tied into this thing, and the being that close to being able to increase our fire protection in the city and just have it thrown out the window. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Mr. Dodds.
Ray Leslie, Lompoc. I think the fire department should stay in the city. I think a lot of it is because of going forward with bigger pay and stuff with the county. It has nothing to do with the protection. We have the county out there that comes in when we need it, and we also go out into the county when they need us. So we have plenty of protection, we have a lot of things going for us. To turn it over to the county, I think it'd be a big mistake. I think right now, especially with all of our new people coming in and everything going on, I think it's going to be a lot bigger, better Lompoc. I think things are going to go forward. Let's try and build our city and make it a better place to be and keep our fire department here.
Thank you, Mr. Leslie.
Robert Cuthbert, city of Lompoc. I actually, on the internet, watched the meeting with the county, and I think it would be kind of premature to say that it was dismissed with any kind of prejudice at all. It was dismissed with a lot of other agenda items, and one of the supervisors wanted to defer it into the future, and her stated reason was simply that there was a new city council coming on, this was a major proposal, and it would be just better to defer it for that reason. And so, anything, everything in the public record is not suggesting that somehow they're not necessarily in favor one way or another, and I think it would behoove the next city council to really do, do the same, defer, and let's see what the proposal really means, and look at the numbers and so forth. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Cuthbert. Seeing no one else rise, we'll close public comment on this item and bring it back to the council. Mr. Durham?
Well, Mr. Mayor, I, I'm not, I'm not comfortable with, with Councilmember Rouge saying, "Let's scratch it." I agree. These men and women have gone through a lot of, face it, the last year and a half, we've all taken a lot of phone calls. We've talked to a lot of people. We've got our feet into it. A statement that Mr. Cuthbert just made, I think we should, we should go ahead and continue this, at least until the incoming council can take a look at it. That way, it'll give them a little bit more time as far as the Santa Barbara, the county. Because I, my comment as far as the cost change might be, not that they're going to hire more, we're not. Lompoc City's not going to hire three firefighters, I guarantee you. So, but I'm, I'm hoping that possibly it would take some of the cost out of what the county was saying that we would have to pay, because we were down three personnel. So, but I would like to see it go ahead and, and we're three-quarters of the way through this. Let them finish it. I don't, I'm not willing to pull the carpet out from underneath them just yet.
Thank you, Mr. Durham. Mrs. Martner?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I look at this strictly from the point of view of the budget, and we will have a new council, and one of the first things that we will be dealing with will be the budget. And in that budget, we will have to find monies to perhaps hire three new firefighters or perhaps not hire three new firefighters. Nevertheless, the decision is going to have to be made. Are we going to maintain fire services or are we going to decrease fire services? And those decisions will have to be made by our future council. When we make those decisions, I like to have all options on the table. I personally feel that I like to see all my options and then decide which one is the one that is the best for the city. So I would urge the new council to not scrap this proposal. I am not in a position to ask this council to impose in the new council to do so. So I really would like to see the new council to basically request to look at those numbers, because I think those numbers will be one option for us to look at. It might be a bad option, it might not be an option that we like, we might opt for other options, but why scrap something that we haven't even seen yet? So I would like to keep that option on the table. So I would request that, and I will ask the new council to consider, to do not scrap any further, you know, to continue, should I say, to continue looking at the county as one potential option for fire services on this city. Thank you.
Mr. Lingle?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. You know, my comment on this, in the first paragraph for the background, it clearly states that the intent of this request was determined whether there'd be some budgetary savings through the consolidation of the fire services. And in this, for that reason, I have to agree with Councilmember Martner. We don't have the figures here to make a decision whether there will be a budgetary savings. It doesn't look real good with the numbers that have been presented to us, especially with the last sentence in here, it says, "As a result, the county has determined that it was not feasible for the county to proceed at this point." But we, as a council, do not have the information to make a decision. So as poorly as it may look at this point, I'd like to at least see the final figures before we can make a decision, because at this point, I just don't have the figures.
Thank you, Mr. Lingle. Well, I, I've some, if we were making the decision today and, and this was the council that was going to live with it for the next year, I would vote with Ms. Rouge to, to can the, the action. We started off with a request for proposal to see if the county could provide the same level of services at a lower cost. We've had several drafts, and each one of them was much higher cost than we're spending now. The county has told us basically that they withdrew it because of new administration and because of the budget problems therein, and they've told us that it will cost quite a bit of money for them to proceed and put together a proposal in a final package. And they want to know what our intent is. I would agree that that decision should be made by the next council, but I don't, but I, but I would not ask the next council, if, based on the information before us and all the indications are that it would cost a lot more money, not to ask the county to spend a lot of money when they're in budgetary problems, when they're also laying off staff members, where they're reorganizing, and ask them to go through the horrible expense of putting together a formal proposal that then is approved by the county supervisors when all the indicators are that, that it will, will not be something that, that will be favorable to us. I would hope that the next council will take the preliminary or a draft proposal and make a decision, do we really want to go forward? But tonight, I would suggest we merely accept the report from the chief and, and leave it for an agenda item for the, for the, for the next council to advise the, the county. Can I have a general concurrence with that, that approach? I don't even think we need a motion. We accept, accept the report. Okay, that'll conclude that, that item before us. Next item is the consent calendar. On the consent calendar, excuse me, all of these items are considered non-controversial and taken as one motion by the council. There was no one who wanted to speak on any of the consent items during oral communications. What are the wishes of the council?
Mr. Mayor, I move, Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept the consent calendar.
I second it.
We have motion, second. Let's get our votes. And consent calendar is approved. I'm sorry, my voice is about gone, but see, if it cracks, it's not the sound system. At this time, I'd like to turn the, the gavel over to Mayor Protem, Vice Chair Martner.
Are we doing first the consolidation of the elections or are we doing the presentations first? I'm sorry. We're doing the, okay, we'll do the presentations first. Okay, thank you. Sorry. That's fine. At this point in time, I would like to present plaques to our outgoing council members, and I first like to do so with Councilmember Rouge. So here is a plaque, "The city of Lompoc presents Ann Rouge, council agency member in appreciation of her years of service to the city of Lompoc, November 2006 to December 2010."
Six years was spent for the city of my life on the planning commission, and then four years here in the council chambers. So that makes 10 years, just half as much as Mayor Saminsky spent serving this community. It has been an experience. The general word is usually interesting. I've learned a lot. Most of the time, it was a joy to serve the city of Lompoc. I especially want to thank the staff for being their professional, educated, expert advisors. I can't say enough about the dedication of the staff for the city of Lompoc. You are all very fortunate to have such hard-working, dedicated, professional, educated, well-trained people on the staff. And they're the ones that I went to when I had a question and it was always answered, and much patience, they showed me a lot of patience on things I didn't quite understand, especially in the finance department. I had to spend a lot of time there. I also wanted to thank, especially our city administrator, we've had a really tough two and a half years, especially. I learned a lot from Laurel, and she's a wonderful person and will serve the city well also. I also wanted to thank the other council members that I served with, Will Skyler, Dwayne Hohm doll, Dick DeWes, Mike Saminsky, and Cecilia, Bob, and Tony. Our council this, this last couple of years has worked very well together, and my wish for the new council is that you will work as well together as we have. We didn't always agree on things, but we came to consensus, and sometimes some of us won and sometimes some of us lost. But we did have consensus, and after the meetings were over, we're still friends and we do work well together. And I would hope, I know, that you will all do the same and work well together, because that's the key to keeping this organization going. And it is an organization. And once more, I do want to thank the staff. So... so very much for all their help. Thank you.
I'd like to present this plaque, "The City of Lompok," to Tony Durham, Council Agency Member in Appreciation of His Services to the City of Lompok, August 2009 to December 2010.
Well, I wish I had something I could say that I did over the last two weeks, because I have nothing to say right now, except thank you. It's been an honor to serve the community again. You know, our family loves this community, and there's nothing that we wouldn't do for this community. But the one that has put up the most of this is my wife, because I'm usually here or at work. So even though it's only been a year and a half, she's a homestead. She takes care of business. But I do agree with Councilmember Rouge. The staff here at the city is phenomenal. And I'm talking from the janitorial right on up through the mayor. The people inside, I'm a hard-headed kind of guy. If I don't understand something, the only way I know what I understand it is to go to the heads of the departments and say, "Okay, explain it to me." I never walked out of the City Hall once that I didn't have the answers, that I didn't have what I needed to make a logical, reasonable decision on what was on the agenda. So I really want to say thank you to everybody here at City Hall. Ms. Barcelona, I'm sure my wife probably thought we had an affair, because we, you know, I was always in her office, and every time I'd walk in with that deer-in-the-headlight look, Laurel would say, "Okay, have a seat, Tony." So I really appreciate all the hard work that you did for me, and you made my job very easy. Thank you, city.
Lastly, I'd like to first present a resolution to Commanding Mike Samenski. This resolution was given by NCPA. Whereas Mike Samenski has diligently served the City of Lompok as City Councilman, Mayor, Voting Delegate to the League of Cities, member of the Northern California Power Agency Executive Committee, and past Chairman and current Commissioner to the Northern California Power Agency. And whereas, since 1992, Mike has diligently, willingly, enthusiastically, and generously served the City of Lompok on the Commission of the Northern California Power Agency. And whereas, Mike supports and joins actions that approach and solutions for the betterment of the agency, its members, and the City of Lompok. Whereas Mike has witnessed and pragmatically helped lead NCPA's transmission from the PG&E interconnection agreement to the California Independent System Operator Market Paradigm. And whereas Mike had made long voyage from Lompok to Roseville more times than he can count, and has overcome Herculean obstacles to apply his experience and expertise for the benefit of Lompok and NCPA. And whereas Mike has won an everlasting place in the hearts of our agency members and staff, now therefore may be resolved by the Commission of the Northern California Power Agency that this agency, its members, and its employees vigorously commend and thank Mike Samenski for his lengthy, tireless, crafty, common sense, adroit, and dedicated service to the agency. Thank you. Thank you. Now, that was NCPA. And of course, all of us. Now, here, I would like to present Mike with his plaque in appreciation for his years of services. Where are you, Mike?
Here.
Okay, Mike, please. In appreciation for his years of service to the City of Lompok, Council Agency Member, November 1990 to August 2009, Mayor, August 2009 to December 2010.
It really has been an e-ticket ride for me. And if you know what that means, you were around back before I, back about the time I got started. I'll mention to Ms. Rouge, I was on the Parks and Recreation Commission for 10 years before I served. So I still got just three to one on years. The trips to Northern California and what I did with NCPA, they recognized me with the resolution, with that resolution earlier this week. We had two full days of meetings, and I left there about 5:00 to drive home. I got home about 2:00 in the morning. And in order to stay awake after driving that 600 miles on I-5, I put the old Mitch Miller songs on the CD, and I sang as loud as I could, and that kept me awake to get home. And it's done that many times. But as a result, I don't have much of a voice tonight. So that's why I am hoarse.
You didn't have much of a singing voice.
It's already been said that you've got the best staff in the world here in City Hall. And I'll have to echo that, and I echo that. I think back to council members, staff back in 1990, or back Jack Anderson in 1969, 1970, when I was on the Parks and Recreation Commission, through today's staff. Many times, the public will comment that things are not being done up to their expectations. The parks are not being maintained. It's us, and it's all of you that didn't provide the sales tax revenue that allowed us to keep the park staff at full. We're almost 50% cut in parks and maintenance and trees from what we were 10 years ago. So respect what they are doing. That kind of level of service has been cut through most of the staff in the city. Not only the number of bodies cut, but everyone in the city is working with two days a month off without pay. So they're working with fewer work hours to get the job done that has to be done. And that goes for levels of, from the lowest levels that are actually doing the work through the supervisors, through the, who are actually doing a lot of work through the managers. So they...
So Mayor, you go to the other end.
Sir what? Oh, okay, thank you. At this time, I guess, excuse me, my final act is call a recess in the meeting. And pardon? One more item?
Yeah.
Oh, I thought, okay, I beg your pardon. I'll ask Stacy Alvarez to take over.
At this time, I'd like to ask Mayor John Lynn, Councilmember Dirk Starbuck, and Councilmember Ashley Costa and their families to step forward, please, for the swearing in and take the oath of allegiance. Right here?
Hey, how you doing?
You have another one, though? I had a whole pocketful when I came in, but I've been sucking my trailer.
They're gonna have to see me maybe fan out a little bit.
Yeah, there we go. Please raise your right hand and repeat after me. I state your name.
I, Esther Rock.
Do solemnly swear that I will support and defend the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California
Against all enemies, foreign and domestic, That I will bear true faith and allegiance
To the Constitution of the United States
And the Constitution of the State of California That I take this obligation freely
Take this obligation freely.
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion
Without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion.
And that I will well and faithfully discharge
The duties upon which I am about to enter.
How about if we do it together?
Hold on. You're the mayor now.
Oh, together.
All right. Recession.
We hereby declare a recess.
Let's see. Next, we will move on to item 11 on the agenda, the appointment of city commission members. And we'll start with the nominations for the Beautification Commission. I'll take the prerogative and go first, and I will nominate James Dunleavy to the Beautification Commission, and Councilmember Starbuck. Who's your nomination?
I nominate Becky Barrett.
And are there any other nominations from the council? Seeing none. If either of those two nominees are here, would you please rise to be recognized? Thank you. And would you introduce?
Welcome, Becky.
Now, Becky, you do get a chance to make a speech if you want. And does any of the member of the public have a comment on this, on these nominations? Okay. Now we need to vote on that. So if you would please cast your vote in favor or against these two nominations. And that passes five to zero. Just for those of you in the public who aren't familiar with this, and I should have explained it beforehand, council members have, I don't want to say personal appointments, but they're responsible for appointing people to various commissions to work with them in the process of city government. And now we'll consider nominations for the Human Services Commission. I don't have mine ready yet, but Councilmember Starbuck, I believe you do.
I nominated Carol Benham.
And is Carol present? Hi, Carol. You have an opportunity to speak too. Would you like to give a speech?
Thanks.
Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes.
I will not make the nomination, because I feel it's the privilege of the mayor and Councilmember Costa, but I would put in the name of Barbara Holt, who has served on the Human Services Commission for the past 20 years, for your consideration, either one of you, in the future. But again, I feel it is your privilege to nominate your own commissioner.
Thank you for your input. Is there anyone else who'd like to speak on these nominations, this nomination? All right, and let's cast our votes. And that passes five to zero. Next, we'll consider nominations to the Parks and Recreation Commission. My nomination is Arlen Seacrest for the Parks and Recreation Commission. Councilmember Costa, who is your nomination?
My nomination is Beverly Kennedy.
Okay. Councilmember Starbuck, who is your nomination?
I nominated Craig McNamie.
And are any of you who have been nominated here this evening, would you please stand? There they are. And would either of you like to address the council? Is there anyone in the public that would like to address either of these nominations? Seeing none, is there any other comment from the council?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, ma'am.
There was an addendum that came. I had my new Parks and Rec Commissioner appointment. Did everybody get them in their folders? It just came in the mail today in our boxes? No?
Well, procedurally, could we accept a council member's nomination? Does anyone...
I had Patty Cogan. Isn't she there in the list? That is my nomination.
Oh, perfect. Okay, good.
Okay, so I would just take it as...
I'm sorry. Let me back up then. Councilmember Martner, would you introduce your nomination for the commission?
Patty, I don't think Patty's here, but she will be replacing my previous Parks and Rec Commissioner.
Okay. All right, let's back up one more time. Does anyone now wish to address the council, since we've changed names on this? Seeing no one, any other comments from the council? Okay, let's go ahead and vote. And that passes five to zero. Next, we'll consider nominations for the Planning Commission. My nomination for the Planning Commission is Ron Fink. Councilmember Costa?
My nomination is Mary Leach.
Councilmember Starbuck?
Frances Hain.
And are Mary or Frances here, or Ron with us this evening? I knew we saw one of you. Would you like to say something?
Oh, thank you.
Is there anyone else in the public that would like to address these nominations? Seeing no one, is there any other council comment? Let me vote, please. Passes five Okay, we now come to the selection of the Mayor Pro Tem. Oops, I missed one. How did I miss one? I missed two. I missed three. The page is in the wrong place. Okay, it's a good thing you guys are watching me. Take that off my point count, Ashley. Next, we will consider nominations for the Public Safety Commission. My nomination for the Public Safety Commission is Robert Cuthbert. Councilmember Costa?
My nominee is Ann McCarty.
Councilmember Starbuck?
My nominee is Roy Bellas.
And all those of you who are nominated and present, would you please stand? Would either of you like to address the council? Would either of you like to address the council?
Thank you, Ann.
Would anyone like to address the council regarding these nominations? Seeing no one, rise, and no other council lights lit, could we please vote? And that passes five to zero. Next, we'll consider nominations for the Utility Commission. My nomination is Martin Vanino. And Councilmember Starbuck, your nomination?
I nominated Jonathan Munt.
All right, and are either of the nominees here, I see Martin standing. Martin, is there anything you would like to say? Is there anyone by the audience that would like to address this? Okay, any other comments from the council? Seeing none, can we please vote? And that passes five to zero. All right, congratulations to all of our appointed commissioners, and we look forward to working with all of you. I will rely personally on my commissioners for input, and I know the other councilmembers will be relying on theirs. Now we'll move to item 12 on the agenda, selecting the Mayor Pro Tem. Councilmember Martner is the current Pro Tem, and perhaps you might make a comment?
Um, I contacted Councilmember Lingle yesterday and asked him if he would like to, um, take on the rotation, and he said that actually the mayor had already suggested that, so I guess you got the first shot at it and would like to nominate him. That is fine with me as well.
No, I think you should do it.
Okay, so I would like to nominate Councilmember Lingle as our Mayor Pro Tem.
And is there a second? I don't know, but we're gonna get one. I don't need one. Oh, okay, so we're safe on that. Let's see. Are there any other nominations for the position? Okay. Are we ready to take a vote? Any discussion? Away we go. Councilmember Lingle has been approved as Mayor Pro Tem, five to zero. Thank you. Now we'll move to item 13 on the agenda, the council review of appointments of the several commissions, committees, and agencies. Let's see. The Community Action Commission. Well, let's see. I don't see any lights lit up. Councilmember Costa, you haven't been elected to anything yet since I thought it would be, we'd give you the first crack at the deal. Would you like to be the Community Action Commission?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Might I suggest that our two senior members tell us what they would like to be included with first, and can do a deduction process that way, and, you know, figure out what's left?
We'll get the leftovers.
I object.
Seniority.
Okay, well, let's start out with those that are, already have someone who's a senior member who is serving. So currently, the, um, the NCPA representative was Mayor Siminski, and the alternate was Bob Lingle. Bob, would you like to move forward to the, to be the agency representative?
I'd be pleased to do that, yes.
Okay. And the next most experienced person on the council is Councilmember Martner. Would you like to become his alternate, Councilmember Martner?
That would be fine.
Okay. We can take this in a single vote, Mr. Pony? Okay. Let's see.
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
May I, um, just a point of, do we need to, currently Ron Stasi, Utility Commissioner, is also an alternate. Do we need to elect him as an alternate as well?
I apologize, I don't know, is Ron here?
Yes.
Ron, do we need to put you on there?
Yes, I would be able to, um, in the absence of either of the, or the alternate, and as a result, if one of the utility directors meetings two weeks prior, I'm quite familiar with the agenda topics, so if they weren't available, I could ask the responsible.
Is there any objection on the pound of the council to adding Mr. Stasi as a second alternate? Okay. So it shall be. Let's see. Councilmember Martner, you serve on the Air Pollution Control Board. Would you like to continue in that position?
Uh, yes, Mr. Mayor.
Would you be kind enough to accept Councilmember Starbuck and teach him about that? Because I think it's important that he doesn't feel left out.
Can I object?
Are you being difficult, Councilmember Starbuck?
I retract then.
Okay, we're not allowed to have too much fun, okay? We've been counseled on this, so. Uh, let's see. Councilmember Lingle, you serve on the Breeze Political Advisor, yes, Political Advisory Committee. Would you like to continue in that responsibility?
Actually, I'd prefer not to, but if no one else wants it, I will continue, but I'd prefer to step down from that.
Okay. Would another councilmember like to advi, to volunteer to be a PAC person?
I'll do that.
We don't need an alternate for that, do we?
No.
Once a year?
No.
Once a year?
Yeah.
It's a tough one, huh? Okay, um, let's see. The Santa Barbara County Association of Governments is generally the position held by the mayor, but I don't think I can nominate myself, so one of you's going to have to do that.
I would nominate the mayor.
Who would like to volunteer to be my alternate?
Lingle.
I will accept it, but I, Ms. Martner, would, I think you had indicated an interest prior in that, had you not?
I don't recall.
Okay. Okay, then I will serve as your alternate, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Uh, let's see. We're up to the liaison to the Chamber of Commerce, and Councilmember Starbuck actually contacted me and asked me for that position. Is there anyone here who is interested in that position, or shall we move for Councilmember Starbuck?
I will.
Seeing Bob lights lit, go for it.
I will nominate Mr. Starbuck for that position.
Okay. Let's see.
The alternate?
We have the the Lompoc Valley Committee, which I have been told is not currently active, and Councilmember Martner, you were the alternate to that. Have you ever been called to a meeting on that?
No, Mr. Mayor, I am not aware that it's actually, um, active at all.
I received an email with regard to that from, I think, the city administrator. Could you speak on that?
Staff has been advised that this is now a defunct.
So will we, should, it is in our, in our handbook, should we appoint someone just in case it comes back to life, or what should we do? Is the council comfortable with passing that one by even though it's in our handbook? Okay. Okay. All right, we're back to the Community Action Commission. Councilmember Costa, the one that you've sent us off on this voyage. Would you now like to volunteer for that, or would you like to volunteer someone else?
I'll volunteer.
Okay, and now we have the Multi Jurisdictional Solid Waste Task Force, which has in the past been occupied by the mayor and Councilmember Lingle has been the alternate. City Administrator, could you tell us what that is, please?
Let's see. Public Works Director Larry Bean. He'll do that.
It's a group that works with all the other solid waste jurisdictions in the county, essentially County, County, uh, Santa Barbara County Solid Waste. Currently, the main two projects that we've come down to at this point are Santa Maria's Regional Landfill, their new landfill out on 101, south of Orchid, and Santa Barbara County's Conversion Technology Project that they're trying to get in place to be placed at Tehigis. That's a, a project to convert waste to energy. So this group looks at overall county issues for solid waste for the future.
You know, it's scary to say, but I'm actually very familiar with that waste conversion program at Tehigis because one of the assistant scoutmasters in my troop that was here earlier is involved in it, and it's amazing the things you talk about around the campfire at night. So at the pleasure of the council, if someone would care to nominate, I would, I would be happy to serve on that.
I'll gladly nominate you for that.
And Councilmember Lingle, you have been the alternate in the past. However, I note that Councilmember Costa does not have too many opportunities yet, and I think it would be fair that if we gave her another opportunity.
Notice that my committee meets every month. But if it's your pleasure, I don't mind.
You know, I just thought it'd be a great opportunity to sit around and talk about trash.
Is there any other councilmember, is this serving as an alternate? Because in this situation, it doesn't say alternate.
Yeah, it is serving as an alternate.
I would be fine with that as an alternate.
Okay, thank you. Okay, then we have the Central Coast Commission for Senior Cit, uh, Senior Citizens Area Agency on Aging. And is there, would one of the councilmembers be interested in serving on that?
Well, Mr. Mayor, if no one wants that position, it's actually, Councilmember Durham was doing it. He found it actually very enlightening and very enjoyable, so if no one else cares to do it, I will be glad to take that on.
I thank you for volunteering. And now we have the California Municipal Utilities Association, and Councilmember Martner, you've served on that in the past. Would you, would you consent to continue to serve?
Um, yes, that's fine.
Thank you. And I think the last one is the Santa Barbara County Selection Committee, which has been occupied by the mayor. It's four mayors, therefore I guess I'm it, assuming one of you would nominate me.
Once again, I'll nominate you for the City Selection Committee.
Thank you very much, and I believe, uh, clerk, did I get them all? Okay?
Maybe I skipped it. Uh, who is the liaison for the Chamber of Commerce?
That was Dirk.
Oh, sorry, okay.
That was the one he volunteered for. Okay.
Mr. Mayor, could we have the city clerk just go down the list real quick so we make sure we have them?
Community Action Commission, council is Ashley Costa. Liaison to Chamber of Commerce, Councilmember Dirk Starbuck. Lompoc Valley Committee is no longer, um, working. Electric Utility Joint Power Agencies, it would be Councilmember Bob Lingle. Alternate, Councilmember Martner and Ron Stasi. Santa Barbara County Air Pollution Control District, Councilmember Cecilia Martner. Alternate, Councilmember Starbuck. Santa Barbara County Association of Governments, Councilmember, excuse me, Mayor John Lynn. Councilmember Bob Lingle is the alternate. The Breeze Political Advisory Committee, Councilmember Dirk Starbuck. Multi Jurisdictional Solid Waste Task Group, Councilmember, oops, excuse me, Mayor John Lynn. And alternate, Councilmember Costa. Central Coast Commission for Senior Citizens Area Age, Agency on Aging, Councilmember Bob Lingle. California Municipal Utilities Association, Councilmember Cecilia Martner. Santa Barbara County City Selection Committee, Mayor John Lynn.
Okay, I have that, the same recorded on mine. Is there any discussion from the council? Okay, can we go ahead and vote on that, please? We're voting on that? And that passes five to zero. Thank you for your help, everyone. Let's see. Now we'll move on to item number 14, the award of project number FY07-P-1, the Lompoc Aquatic Center Dehumidification Project. The staff report will be given by City Engineer Craig Dearling. Craig?
Thank you, Mayor and councilmembers. My name is Craig Dearling. I work in the Engineering Division, as it was mentioned, and have been managing this project for the Parks and Recreation Department as our client. And also presenting tonight will be Joanne Plummer of the Parks and Recreation Department and Brad Wilkie, Management Services Director. Just to reiterate the purpose of the project, city project number FY07P1 will install a dehumidification system at the Lompoc Aquatic Center and will also repair and replace elements of the facility which have been damaged by the humid and corrosive conditions. The dehumidification system has been designed to maintain humidity levels within the facility in order to minimize future corrosion damage and to optimize occupant comfort. If awarded now, the project should begin construction in January of 2011 and should be completed in May of 2011. I'd like to now introduce Joanne Plummer to discuss the background and the need for the project.
Thank you, Craig. Good evening, Honorable Mayor, members of the council, members of the audience and our viewers at home. Tonight, I'm here to provide you with a little background on the Lompoc Aquatic Center's dehumidification project. The facility was originally designed to have a humidity control system, but due to cost and the ability to open the roof panels for ventilation, the work was excluded at the time of construction. As we know, Lompoc is very unique, and when the weather becomes cold, the conditions inside the facility worsen. As the heated pool water evaporates with no ability to pull the moisture from the air, the water vapors condense on the cold metal surfaces inside the enclosure. This has caused extensive corrosion and premature deterioration to elements within the pool enclosure. The only solution to reduce humidity levels within the facility has been to open the operable roof panels and use fans on the deck in many of the areas. The result is a cold and very uncomfortable environment for the facility occupants. As the Recreation Manager that oversees the operations of our community aquatic program, our team has the pleasure to provide aquatic programs for children, teens, adults, and seniors for recreation, competitive, and/or therapeutic purposes. The challenge the programming staff have faced with the environmental conditions has grown, especially at a time when we are tasked with increasing facility revenues and decreasing operational costs. As staff noticed a reduction of participants and patrons leaving the facility prior to the conclusion of certain programs, adjustments were made. As a result, during cooler months, programs at the facility are scheduled to end early due to the fog that forms inside and the cold environment. These conditions are not only present in the evening hours, but on cold winter days, patrons avoid the facility because they know it will be cold inside as well. At times, the conditions can become visually unsafe, and staff is forced to actually end programs abruptly in the interest of safety to our patrons. A dehumidification system will provide a consistent environment for our customers, which allows staff to adjust programming to accommodate more families and commuters. This brings the potential for an increase in attendance and revenues without another in, increase in fees to our customers. Tonight, you will hear information related to the bid process for construction of the dehumidification system. dehumidification system. The process requires that the contractor complete the work with minimal customer impacts. When the Lompoc Municipal Pool was closed, our citizens were completely out of their community pool for over four years, waiting for their opportunity to enjoy aquatic programs without having to travel out of town. Now, due to budget constraints, we are forced to shut the facility down for six weeks a year, which is a very difficult but very necessary action. We have many senior citizens who come to our facility on a daily basis for water therapy who have told us that they struggle with mobility when they are not in the water. While it is realized that this project will impact programs, your staff worked very hard to ensure that all impacts to the customer would be minimal. In fiscal year 2008, 2009, 100,849 patrons visited the Lompoc Aquatic Center. Last year, with a six-week closure, our attendance was reduced by 11%, but we still had nearly 90,000 people that walked through the doors of the aquatic center from ours and surrounding communities. Over the last fiscal year, we had 1,600 students learn how to swim, 712 individuals in water exercise classes, 240 hours of recreation swim, and 1,276 and a half hours of lap swim opportunities. In addition, the facility hosted specialty camps, certification classes, and special events for the community of Lompoc. The facility regularly brings in people from the Santa Maria and San Inez areas and has welcomed patrons from as far north as Santa Rosa and as far south as San Diego for special events. Your staff is always proud to show off the facility as our community pride, but the current conditions of the facility are deteriorating quickly. This facility is only four years old and has the appearance of one that has seen a significant life. Some areas are so bad that without immediate repair are quickly becoming a health and safety concern for our patrons. Part-time personnel continually work polishing the metals, sanding down rust areas, and doing everything within their area of expertise to minimize the impacts of the environmental conditions. Some examples of the corrosion issues of the pool enclosure are as follows. The conditions inside the storage room are very poor due to the moisture, and in most cases, the space cannot be utilized as it's intended and therefore underutilized. Dry storage and electronic storage is simply not an option in these areas. Light fixtures in these areas continue to fail, and the ongoing repairs are costly. Rust flakes from the fire suppression system fall onto the pool deck and into the water, creating a safety and maintenance issue. The hydraulic door enclosures on deck doors are failing and leaking oil on the pool deck, adding costly repairs. These are just a few of the problems the facility is facing. While each of these issues has a long-term effect, there are current fiscal impacts for supplies, equipment replacement, and staff time for maintenance and custodial. In addition, it is important to note that while aluminum doesn't rust, it can corrode and in time can become a significant and costly concern. A lot of damage has already occurred in the facility, but as time goes on, we face the costly expense of replacement versus repair. I respectfully urge you to consider moving forward on this project tonight. Each day that we wait on this project, we impact the life of our facility, our programs, customer service, and our operational budget. Thank you for your consideration and support, and I'm going to turn the microphone back over to Craig Dearling, who's going to share the bid process with you.
During the design of this project, the city engaged a professional design consultant through a publicly advertised, competitive, qualifications-based process. The design consultant prepared plans, technical specifications, and a construction cost estimate. And the construction cost estimate piece of work was performed by a subconsultant to our prime consultant, who was a professional construction cost estimator. The design consulting team also included a professional structural engineer who evaluated the aquatic center facility for corrosion damage and prepared a written report of findings and recommendations, all of which were incorporated into the plans and specifications. At the request of the City Parks and Recreation Department, the construction work schedule was arranged to minimize facility closure and thereby minimize impact to patrons and revenue loss. Also during the design phase, the city retained Harrison Associates, who provided two reviews of the plans and specifications and provided comments to improve the ability of contractors to bid on the project and to construct the project. The plans and specifications were revised after each of these two rounds of comments to incorporate those suggestions. During the construction advertisement, the city noticed, advertised, and bid the project in accordance with the procedures of the Uniform Public Construction Cost Accounting Act, which is part of the public contract code. One bid was received on bid opening day from Brandon Incorporated, doing business as Smith Electric Service of Santa Maria, California, in the amount of $1,151,000. Engineering staff reviewed the bid and found it compliant with the requirements prescribed in the bid documents. Engineering staff then assessed the bid situation. Since only one bid was received and it was above the construction cost estimate, contractors responding to the question of what limited bidding stated, the most common response was that tight competition or their feeling of being less competitive than their competitors limited bidding. The second most common response was that some of the damage repair work was not quantified and defined in the bid documents completely. The third most common response, high risk, it was a high-risk project, doing damage repair work in existing facility and also working around a public swimming pool. And the fourth most common response, that bonding was difficult and more expensive. Staff conducted a second round of questions specifically related to what could lower the cost of the project. And on our PowerPoint here, the first of those questions just was, what could be done to lower the cost of the project? And this is a summary of the responses we received from the 12 contractors who attended the pre-construction meeting. As it says on the slide, the most common response was that nothing stood out as an obvious fix to substantially lower the cost of the project. Second, some savings can be achieved by value engineering with contractors either after award or prior to rebidding. Next, to itemize, quantify, and completely define all the damage repair work. And lastly, others either didn't provide an answer or suggested changes that were very minor, resulting in little savings. The second question along this theme was how much could be saved if the facility was closed for the duration of construction, the full four and a half months? Five said only minor savings could be achieved. Three said substantial savings, five to 10%, and others didn't provide an answer. And our final question was, how low could bids be if the project was rebid and all suggested cost savings measures were implemented, providing all damage repair quantities, definition of work, and the city closing the facility for the full duration of construction? Four said possibly at or under $1 million. Two said the same or higher than the bid received. Two said possibly a little lower than the bid received, and others didn't provide an answer. The city engineering staff then assessed what it would cost to put the project out to bid as two separate projects, per staff recommendation, two in the staff report, and also, well, the consultants splitting the project work and defining all the work discussed. So the top line there, $25,000 is the estimated design consultant's additional work to revise the plans to accomplish this. The $32,000 is estimated cost of engineering staff time to rebid and advertise these two projects. And the third line, $25,000 estimated engineering staff cost to provide construction management for the separate first smaller project, for a total estimated additional cost of $82,000 in order to put the project out to bid as two separate projects in accordance with that staff recommendation. There are also some other costs associated with going this route, which Joanne Plummer will come up and summarize.
Okay, so we took a look at if we were to shut down the aquatic center for four and a half months, what type of savings would we see? In part-time salary costs, we'd see a reduction of $44,378. And in operational costs, which, the operational costs are related directly to reduced chemicals and utilities, and that savings is estimated to be $18,652 for an estimated aquatic center savings if we were to shut down for four and a half months of $63,030. Aquatic Center added costs for the four-and-a-half-month closure. There's a cost to shutting down, not just of some savings, but we lose quite a bit as well. We have an estimated revenue loss for that closure, which, in taking it in two separate projects, shuts us down for part of April and then September through December. It's approximately $60,000 in revenue that we would lose. In addition, because we would have part-time staff that we know we would lose, not being able to guarantee them hours for such a lengthy period of time, we are estimating that we are going to be spending at least $2,500 to recruit and retrain staff, and those are hard-dollar figures related to the actual cost of the certifications and uniforms for new staff, as well as the potential cost of renting an aquatic facility in order to conduct such trainings. When you're training lifeguards, you actually need water. And the estimated revenue loss after reopening due to the closure that would impact regular patrons is approximately $17,439. And just to share with you, when we originally closed the aquatic center for six weeks in December, we had estimated that we would see a loss of about 10% of our client base. We compared our February '08 revenues to our February 2009 revenues, and there was an actual loss of 22%. So in coming up with that estimated loss of customers, we were estimating a 20% loss of January through April timeframe, but we also are hoping to retain and return customers for summer months and try to regain some of that. So there is that loss. The next table, that's a grand total estimated cost of $79,939. The next table is the summary of aquatic center savings with added costs of the four-and-a-half month closure. While we may see a savings of $63,030, we will also lose $79,939, taking the savings from the costs, still showing a deficit of $16,909. In this area, it's important to note that when the aquatic center loses revenues and which do not exceed the cost savings, that $16,909 will directly impact the city's general fund. We receive financial subsidy for the aquatic center, and we're able to offset that subsidy through user fees, and when those user fees go down, we need more general fund subsidy. The next slide is our summary of the costs associating if we were to rebid this project. The estimated additional RDA bond project costs, as Craig mentioned, were $82,000. Combined with the estimated net cost to the aquatic center budget of the four-and-a-half month closure is $16,909, with the estimated cost associated to rebid this project of $98,909. Brad? And Brad Wilkie is going to discuss the financial aspect of this project.
Thank you, Mayor, council members. I'll keep this one a little short. We've gone through a lot of items relating to this specific project. What I'm going to do is go through and the timeline of what we've done since the project was officially authorized by the agency and the council. Back on April 20th, the council and agency approved the use of bond proceeds for two projects, for the community center project and for this dehumidification project. The amount of bond proceeds that was expected at that point in time to be used was about In May of 2010, the agency authorized the use of bond proceeds up to $7.1 million. That was in the process of getting to the point where the bond could be sold. On June 1st, the agency board, the city council, and the public financing agency board approved the sale of the tax allocation bonds. At that point in time, based on the market, our credit rating, the expectation was that we would receive about $6.99 million in usable bond proceeds for the projects. That would be enough to fund what we thought was the cost in the April timeframe when that was approved. On June 15th, we got some good news. The tax allocation bonds were sold, and they were sold, resulting in proceeds to be used on the projects of $7.45 million. So we received about $450,000 more in bond proceeds than we thought we would based on our situation with the market. So that was some good news. That gave us some additional proceeds for projects. However, we still only had two projects that were approved. On August 17th, the community center project was awarded. The amount that was awarded was approximately $750,000 less than what we had originally thought it would be in April. So that's another bit of good news. At the same meeting, the dehumidification project equipment was awarded as well. The decision was to split this into two, the equipment being one project, and the ward that we're talking about tonight is another project for the installation. And the main reason for this was the extreme lead time to build that equipment between three and six months. And that was awarded for about $530,000. At the same time, staff recommended reducing the amount of CBG funds for the project for the community center by about $450,000. We were trading CBG for RDA funds mainly because we had such a cost savings on the community center, but it also allows us more flexibility. CBG funds are a lot more flexible in what we can use those for than RDA bond funds. And then finally, tonight, with this project that you're acting upon tonight, we have all the pieces in place of the two projects that are authorized to be funded from bond The total overall project cost for the dehumidification project between the equipment and the ward to install is $2,347. Their overall cost for the two projects is now $9.28 million, including the CBG commitment, as compared with $9.55 million back in April. So comparing to the April estimates that were very preliminary, but we had to use that as a starting point, the amount that we actually have is amounts that have been presented to us as bids is about $268,000 less than what we thought back in April. Compared to what was authorized by the agency board, the $7.1 million, that leaves us $360,000 of authorized but unencumbered funds based on these two projects. If you look at the total bond proceeds of $7.45 million, we will have, all of the things being equal, the bids and the construction costs come in, and the contingencies all are used, we would have about $700,000 remaining of bond proceeds that the agency board and the council can decide on future community projects that can be used to utilize these For the CBG purposes, excuse me, for the RDA purposes, the project costs attributable to to RDA now is $6,740,000. That is also less than what we originally thought the bond proceeds would be bringing in in June of $6.99 million. That was a timeline that gave you a brief timeline of everything that we've done so far. At no point in time have the costs exceeded what we have available for, from bond proceeds. And at the minimum, even based on the $7.1 million, we have $360,000 of headroom. So, and that's where I'll go back to Craig.
Thank you. Just to summarize somewhat along the lines of the staff report, the Aquatic Center needs a dehumidification system, as Joanne discussed, and a number of repairs which this project, FY '07 P1, would provide. The project's bond funding is sufficient to complete the project with the bids received. The primary advantages of awarding the project now include resolving the issues affecting public safety, comfort, and preservation of the facility sooner. The potential disadvantage of awarding the project now is that the bid received was higher than the design consultant's estimate, and the risk of rebidding the project is incurring additional known costs of about $100,000 while lower bid prices are uncertain. Thank you. We are open for questions.
City Administrator? I think from our prior conversation, my understanding was that we did not have to award this tonight. It could be awarded at our next meeting if that was the council's pleasure. Am I correct in that?
Been advised by Public Works Director Larry Bean that that is correct.
Yeah. So the council should be advised that if we feel like we need additional time to consider this or gather additional information, that two weeks is available within the bid award period, and that if we chose to do that, we would not be in danger of losing the current bid. Does the council members have any questions to this point with the testimony? Councilmember Costa?
My question is in relation to page nine of the report under Table 4. I know it's not in relation to the bid that we're speaking of this evening, but I was curious to know, other construction-related costs of $191,981, what that was comprised of?
I have some information that will help address that. The primary purpose of that table was to identify the major components of the projects. The other construction-related costs, they relate to such items as the engineering division costs that are being used to support the project, and that's about, about $30,000 from now until the end of the project. There's also $25,000 of contract maintenance that would be done by the engineering department. Some other things that are in there are internal services that may be needed for planning environmental permits, both city and county permits are in that number. Some of the costs that we, that are in that number have already been spent. Some of it is, for instance, the Harris and Associates buildability review, that's part of that number. The reproduction costs of the actual bids that went out to the contractors, that's part of that cost. So there are a fairly large number of smaller items, and I wanted to have things concentrate more on the major projects such as the, this award that we're talking about tonight.
Thank you.
Larry, could you come up and, we had a conversation the other day, and Larry discussed, and this is just as, you know, for information for the rest of the council to know what I was told, an alternative method of building, of bidding the corrosion repairs along the line of how you discussed with a street repair?
Okay, I'll try to recreate that conversation.
Okay.
An architect put this project together, and usually an architect puts all their plans and specs together, and they ask the contractor to look through it and evaluate it and give them a bottle of wine. I bid $1 million to build this project in accordance with the plans and specifications. An engineering spec, such as a street project that we might put together, would have the plans and specs, but the bid document would look more like, we need 600 tons of asphalt, we need 300 lineal feet of curb and gutter, so many square foot of wheelchair ramps, et cetera. So some of the discussion that Craig had with you and that he related about talking to the contractors were that the repair works on the pool, there's a certain number of bolts and nuts that need to be taken off to inspect the bolt to see if it's corroded away, to a certain point, make a decision, do we pull the bolt out and put a new one in? There's some areas that are hidden by sheet metal that you can't even see the corrosion, you have to get in there and pull it apart. So the architect that put together our bid had a general area shown out, some of the big items were pointed out, but some of the smaller ones, go in this room, repair the damage, which meant pretty much sand it off and paint it. Well, if we came back and came out with a bid that said, consider that you need to take the nuts off of 100 bolts, what would the price per bolt be? If you had to replace 50 of those 100 bolts, what would the replacement cost be, et cetera? We could put together a bid that details much better the repair work. I think the repair, corrosion repair work is though a small part of this $1.1 million project. It's maybe in the order of $200,000 or $300,000. So again, like Craig presented to you, we're looking at, from the contractor's point of view that we talked to that didn't bid on the project, we may save 10%. So at best, we might save $100,000 or so, and it looks like our cost to go back out to bid is close to $100,000. Is that...
I just wanted to share with the council what you shared with me.
Why are you up there, Larry?
Yes.
Why can't we do these inspections ourselves?
We can do many of them, but for a large, ongoing project like this, we have hired a consultant, there's, that did and designed the project. They as a, hired a subconsultant, a structural engineer, that went through our facility to make sure that we didn't have members, structural members that were damaged to a point that we might have a failure in our facility, and we want those, that structural engineer to be able to come back into the building and take a look at the project as it's ongoing.
He was $201,000 off of the estimate that the bid for the, that Smith Electric obviously put in here.
Well, that, that wasn't the same person. There was...
It wasn't. We had our estimator who came in 35% below what the minimum bid was. Am I making sense here?
Well, you're, you're saying they're the same person, the same entity.
No, no, I know it was two different people. There was two estimators, ours and theirs. They're bidder, our estimator.
Correct. The firm that we're talking about hiring is a subcontractor, the structural engineer, to come back and take a look at the bolts when they're, the nuts are removed to see how damaged they are.
So we've got a contract out, or we're submitting for a contract without an end on it. We don't know what our damage actually is then.
To some extent, that was true, and that's why some of the contractors said that they thought this project was a risky project to bid.
Yeah. Maybe we should consider the split where we do know what the dehumidification project is, but we don't know what our corrosion damage is.
Councilmember Martner?
Let me see if I understand this. The bulk of this $1 million is not a corrosion problem?
Correct.
You're saying that it's on the order of maybe just $200,000?
$200,000 to $300,000 is what we estimate.
Okay. So now here we have contractors making a comment that really one of the things that we needed to do was to itemize, quantify, completely define all damage repair work.
Correct.
But that's only $200,000 out of a million dollars.
Correct.
So the bulk of the project was properly assessed by the architect?
I think that's a true statement.
It is a true statement. So the only thing that we don't know is this $200,000 of corrosion, potential corrosion, or it might be half a million dollars, because corrosion, I mean, I went and visited the pool, there are stuff in there that is actually scary to look at.
Right.
And it could turn into a million dollar project.
Correct. And all the contractors that had a chance to bid on the project did walk the project and have a chance to evaluate it. Correct.
So there was only one bidder that was willing to take the risk and say, I know that most of it is a million dollars, and there is a $200,000 uncertainty here that I'm going to gamble and just bid for X, more or less, whereas the other, how many others were, three or four other contractors decided not to bid at all?
Well, Craig, you bring it up, there were, there were, I think, five that we'd have done, five plan holders.
And they decided not to bid at all, not to take the risk where they knew that most of the cost was a million dollars?
Correct.
I have, I, I, you know, I don't understand that.
Well, there were, Craig had, in your report, he didn't spell every detail out tonight when he gave his public presentation, but in your written report that you have, you'll see some of the contractors just didn't bid because they were afraid that the other contractors that were there were better than they were. That was the most common answer that we got, that they could do a better job and give a lower bid.
You mean, they could do the million dollar job for $100,000 or for $800,000, whatever, right?
If I could clarify that, Councilmember Martner, they were, they were concerned that they had bid against Smith Electric, who was a successful bidder, and that they felt they would be unsuccessful bidding and didn't want to put the time in, am I correct in that?
Correct statement, yes.
Yeah. Councilmember Costa?
Our estimate of the corrosion repair you said was around $200,000 to $300,000, but it doesn't, does it outline in the bid the number that they give for the allocation for those repairs?
They don't separate it. They just say, this is the total bid, $1.15 million.
Has there been any communication with them on that to see if they can give you any additional information into...
That, if we award it to them, they have to turn in a schedule of, of the, excuse me, a schedule of cost, and they will itemize what different parts of the project are going to cost. That's how we pay them as they go along and finish parts of the project. So at that point in time, we'll know how they separated it out.
Thank you.
Any other questions? I'm sorry, Bob.
Well, Mr. Mayor, all I was going to say is that I do have some comments, but I would, I'd like to hear from the public before we make any more, so.
Anyone else have a question for staff before we open it to public comment? Okay, seeing no one, it's now time to begin public comment with our brand-new timer. Who would like to be the guinea pig? Martin?
My initial question was, why is it that we are going out to bid for something where we don't really quantify what they need to bid on? And I think that was very accurately and succinctly explained, that there are things that you absolutely can't quantify until you take it apart, so I understand that. Question I have now is, is this Smith Electric the one company that did submit a bid? Are they giving us a fixed dollar amount, or is it an open-ended thing where once they get in and see what actually needs to be done, will they charge us accordingly? So are we opening up Pandora's Box, or is this a fixed dollar amount? That's just a question I have.
Thank you. Next?
Mr. Scotty.
I live in Longhoke. Get my nasty remark over first. Paid a million dollars to an engineering company so we wouldn't have these problems. Still showed up, so sometimes you do the best you can, you still don't win. Anyway, answer the question you just had, 2B1 says that they estimated to do the suppression removal, doors, slide nuts, et cetera, et cetera, is $120,000 to $200,000. It's in your staff report, so I, $200,000 to $300,000 was mentioned. I don't know if that's correct or not. The pool's closed right now, I believe, will be till January. My concern about postponing this is if the contractor gets the award, it could be doing some work and possibly on January be ready to start that project and get it done as quick as possible. I didn't think it was going to take four and a half months to put up a humidifier, but I've never done one, so maybe it does. I think Ms. Plummer did an excellent job on explaining what it's going to cost you to shut the pool down. There's costs going on whether you have it or not. We were spending quite a bit of money on our former pool over here to keep it going, thinking there was some material there we might be able to use on the new pool, so it doesn't sit there and you save money. It costs you money to have it, so I think we know what needs to be done. Smith Electric was a prime contractor on building the pool. They know about as much about it as we do, or maybe even more. If the other companies didn't bid, that's the way it is. I get bids every day on equipment, and I certainly don't get everything in there. Sometimes I send back a no bid because it's equipment that I'm not equipped to handle, or there's major setup on it that I don't have time to do, or various reasons there. The one person that questioned it is, it's kind of an unknown, I, I understand that. It's the old alligator joke, you know, when you're up to your, and alligators, all you want to do is drain the swamp, so we're starting out here to do a little maintenance and a humidifier. I, I think it'd be a mistake to postpone it any further. If the contractor, if you didn't do the award tonight, they'd know it tomorrow and could start working, and then you'd know what your closure date is. You put it off for two months, then they're going to start in March or April, they're going to be right through your summer month, so, you know, let's do it now or postpone it till this time next year.
Thank you. Thank you. Next?
My name is Luke Jones. I'm an estimator with Smith Electric, and I'm the one that put this package together. Your concerns with the corrosion, the corrosion part of the project, the repairs is a minimal amount of this project. The epoxy painting and other items to prevent this in the future are a more costly item than the repairs. The biggest part of this is the fire suppression system is being completely replaced, all the ductwork's being replaced, the insulation of new dehumidifiers. It's, as your concerns with the corrosion, even if there is some stuff found over and above what we're anticipating, I think it'd be very minimal in extra cost. Like they said, you'd have to go through and do a lot of disassembling of the building to sit down and get a true look at what is corroded, and I know the engineers, I'm sure they went through and did their examination as far as they could. Granted, you know, you open Pandora's Box when you're getting into something like this, but it's not to a point, the building isn't that old. The corrosion is going to be very limited, but at this point, you need to stop the corrosion, clean it up, and get the building to a usable and a safe state. So just to give the board or the council, our bid was a competitive bid. We put together the best competitive number we could put, you know, figuring we had competition bidding against us, so it isn't a fat number thrown out there. It was a very competitive number, and we looked at it during the time of bidding to see if we could get closer down to the budget cost, and we squeezed it down as far as we could, so just to feel sure that you've got a good competitive number there. Thank you.
I just have a real quick question. You, you were the only bidder, and I understand the trades unemployment right now is roughly 27%, 29%, true?
I'm not sure on that trade unemployment.
I think I'm fairly close on that, and that's what concerns me. If we have 12 initial bidders, you're the only one to put in. Why?
I think there was five general contractors that originally looked at it. At, at bid time, we were told there was, you know, one or two that were still looking at it up to a few hours before it bid. So we're, we're anticipating at least there's going to be competition of two others, so the complexity of the job, like someone said, you know, Smith Electric... of two others. So, the complexity of the job, like someone said, you know, Smith Electric, we built the building originally. We're mechanical, electrical, plumbing contractors are mainstay. General construction is our, pretty much a support vehicle to that. So, other contractors who are general bringing in subcontractors that are, excuse me, mechanical, they could have felt their costs were going to be up higher and didn't want to take the time to put it together. I mean, it takes a lot of time and money to put together a bid, and sometimes you just, contractors will go sway another way.
Why do you think that our bid was $200,000 lower?
We see that every day with everything we bid. I mean, we do a lot of work at UCSB and everything we've bid recently, their budgets were half of what the bids were, and they had multiple bids all in the same price range. So, engineers use means catalogs, they use different ways to estimate that. Sometimes they're very accurate, sometimes cost of materials are up higher than their, their books are letting them know. So, that could make a difference by 10% to 20% very easily. And there's a lot of material costs in this project here.
Mr. Jones, just on a separate question, and if you're not able to answer, I'm okay with that. Would you say that there was a design issue with this that drove the cost up, or is this design fairly straightforward and not much of an issue?
Design as for these plans here, or the original design?
The design, no, the design of this system, is there another way that it could have been done that would have been substantially less expensive, in your opinion? And if you don't have an answer, it's okay.
Really? Just off the cuff, not really. I mean, this is all work that needs to be done, and everything's being done to, product-wise, to give the, say, the Loma Park a longer lifespan of this building.
Pretty straightforward design, then?
Pretty straightforward. I mean, there's a few little unknowns here and there, but it's pretty much, it's, there's a lot of stuff to replace and fix, but they're going after it with epoxy coatings and other items to, with the dehumidifiers, it'll help tremendously in that building.
Thank you. Any other questions from the council? Councilmember Martner?
I have a question back to the staff, but I'll do that after we finish the public comment.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this subject?
George Bedford. I think what's happened is we have a, we have a new council seated here. We have council members that have only been on here a couple of years. Unfortunately, you and I see that a decision that was not yours to begin with, but when you're dealing with corrosion, especially in aluminum pieces, time pretty much is of the essence. If you hold off and wait too long, you're going to end up with an even worse project. I guess my gamble would be you could do nothing, and the roof of that building will probably cave in before the roof of the old pool, okay? So, that's, that's the dilemma you are in.
Thank you, Mr. Bedford. Anyone else like to speak on the subject? Seeing no one rise, we'll close oral communication and bring it back to the council. Councilmember Martner?
Yes, I have a question to the staff, and is primarily one of the comments that was made, that actually not every bolt is unturned. And what I mean by that is that corrosion is, as I understand, we are going to clean up what we see, and we're going to add new ductwork, and we are going to do this and that. We're going to prevent further corrosion to form. But if there is corrosion there that has not been found, it will continue to corrode. And is there anything in the contract that says there is some level of assurance that the corrosion will be removed? That's question number one. Question number two, liability. This is a public building. Again, if there is some corrosion that is not being looked at, that is not going to be found, and the roof does cave in, we're going to get sued by major amounts of money. Is the contractor in any way liable? How is the city going to check that this was done to the best abilities? And I don't know the details, and I really like to get a fuzzy feeling here about who is going to be responsible and how far and what happens, since the details are not being given to us.
I may be able to shed a little light on that. The structural engineer that we employ to review this facility will be part of the corrosion repair process and will be on hand through that process to inspect not only the areas that are visible and repaired, but the other areas as they're opened up and repaired. And at the end of the day, I think it's on that engineer. Am I correct in that, Larry? Okay, thank you.
So, what happens if we find other stuff? Certainly, this contract is for a limited amount of work. There is going to be $1, $1 million plus. What happens to the rest? Are we going to be coming back to the council and say, "Well, guess what? We found another $500,000 worth of damage." And what are we going to do then?
I think...
So, we, you know, we got to put a close to this. Somehow, we got to say, you know...
Well, there is a contingency fund, and there will be change orders on this project as there all are on all projects. And if we find, if the contractor pulls something apart and it's completely destroyed, there will be a discussion and evaluation. They can turn in a request for a change order if they feel it's beyond, completely beyond the scope of work that they estimated. We will see when they turn in their schedule of values what they plan to do precisely. And again, you heard the estimator from Smith Electric come up here, and to say the risky part of it was very small. Most of the stuff was well-defined in the epoxy, what needed to be painted with epoxy paint. There was a structural engineer that went over the building and gave us a report, and nowhere in that report did he say, "The beams are corroded away and the roof's going to cave in." He said, "There's some bolts that are corroded. We need to take the nuts off and see if they're corroded more than 5% or 10%. And we're going to go through that process when we do the project."
Okay, that's fine, and I understand that. So, why are we sweating $200,000? I mean, basically, the question here is, we're sweating and we're, you know, arguing or not arguing, we're having deliberation over a potential $200,000 overestimation from what this architect said that it was going to be.
That's correct, correct.
But now, let me, okay, and that's fine. Given the bidder and given the architect, they said, you know, the corrosion is about the $200,000. So, that's, that's kind of what the risk is, and, you know, they're willing to take the risk, okay? There is yet another risk way out there that is probably much less likely. There could be actually a $500,000, and if it gets him, you know...
We don't believe that, based on the structural engineer's...
You don't believe that at all?
...assessment that we turned and showed, in and showed you back in April.
Okay, okay. Thank you.
Next?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Even if there is a hidden $500,000, any contractor that we choose, if we don't choose Smith now, if we choose XYZ later and that $500,000 comes up, we're going to end up paying for it. I think the crux of this is, we have a, pick a number, 12, 13, 14 million dollar investment that we need to protect. Right now, we have a proposal in front of us that the bidder and our engineers have indicated that there is minimal risk. The majority of the amount of money is not in the repair. We, with this amount of investment, we have to protect it. We have, as Mr. Bedford said, you know, it's only, it's not going to get any better. Corrosion doesn't go away. So, we can't really delay this. I mean, we have an opportunity right now to get it done. Councils in the past have been criticized for delaying projects years and years and years, and I don't want to see this project being delayed. I'm very proud, not that we spent $6 million on the community center, I'm very proud that we finally got it off our table, and we're building that community center. If decisions had been made years ago, possibly to build a community center, we may have been able to build it for four and a half million dollars. Right now, we have an opportunity to correct a problem that we have. It's a major problem that is affecting a major investment we have. So, I'm going to be in favor of approving this project tonight. I agree that we can wait another two weeks, but what are we going to get out of waiting another two weeks? I think we can all agree that if we go out for a rebid, it's only going to take more time. The rebid, I believe, just from what I'm hearing, I believe if we go out for a rebid, it's going to be a higher bid. If I were Smith Electric, we go out for a rebid, I'm going to say, "Shh." Almost said shit. No, but I didn't. Yeah. I'm going to say, "No one else, no one else bid on it before. No one else is going to bid on it again." So, let's pad it by another, not that you'd pad it. Let's put a little extra money into it, because you know what there is concern. You know, we have a solid bid right here to take care of a project or an investment that we have, and I think we just need to get it off. It's a lot of money. Don't take me, don't get me wrong. It's a lot of money, but it's something we have worked in front of us. We just talked earlier about putting together a wish list of projects that we want to work on. We don't want to have to be working on this one for the next four, five, six months or a year later. So, I'm going to be, and I'll make this a motion if anyone wants.
No, I wish you'd wait until everybody has a chance to speak.
Okay.
I know you want to go forward.
When we're ready, I'll be willing to make a motion on this.
I will give you first crack at the deal. I'm sorry, which one of you was first? I wasn't paying attention.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I agree with Councilmember Lingold. I don't think it's worthwhile to sweat the $200,000, okay? And I've been trying to go around and saying, you know, it's really not worth it at this point in time. So, I will also be ready to be making a motion, and let's just get it off the table.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. And please, correct me if I'm wrong here, but it seems as almost as if we have two decisions in one, because we need to decide if we're accepting the bid, but also whether we're going for the complete four and a half month closure. Is that not something where, so what, what part of the presentation?
If, if you elect to award the bid this evening, we move forward as the bid was written and proposed. If you elect to wait and rebid, that would be the potential to consider a four and a half month closure.
Thank you.
I have a quick question. We've talked about corrosion. The proper term with aluminum would be exfoliation. Do you remember what was what there? Are we talking corrosion on steel girder beams, fire suppression corrosion, and exfoliation is the framing that holds the window panes and everything else there?
Well, the bid is nuts, bolts, fasteners.
Steel.
Steel, all the sprinkler pipe in there in the building is basically thrown outside to time the heartbeat. Familiar with the steel we're dealing with, bad handrail fasteners, doors, mostly steel.
But you intend to put epoxy over the aluminum, clean, surface clean in epoxy aluminum?
Epoxy is over all the steel members.
The aluminum is going to stay as it is and count on the dehumidifier system to preserve it.
I'm concerned about a project that's $200,000 over the high estimate on the first night that I'm sitting in the chair, so I wouldn't be able to support it tonight. I might change my story in two weeks. I think because we have the availability of the time, there are several things that I would like to see. Number one, I would like to go back to the architect's estimator and ask him if he can figure out how he missed from the low bid by $350,000 and from the high, high number by $200,000. I would like to contact our building superintendent that is doing the supervision on the community center, who has some extensive experience in mechanical, having just come from the sewer plant, and have him look at the bids and bid specifications and see if we have some issues with regard to that. I did speak to a local contractor who had intended to be part of the bid package for one of the people that didn't bid and who would probably bid if it came back out again, and that's not too important. What I was talking to them about was why they thought this bid came in so far off, and their comments were kind of similar, that the corrosion was a very unknown thing and that they would have been a lot happier bidding it as a, as a separate. They talked about the fact that the closure issue and all of those rules were an issue, and if they were allowed to work at night, it would have a very minimal impact on the bid price because the material cost is so high. And if that were an option in the bid package, that would substantially lower the cost of doing it, because there wouldn't be people in the way, number one, but it would also dramatically lower their liability, because the facility would not be occupied by paying guests. And for those of you who are familiar with insurance costs, the cost between insuring for someone who comes in at will and insuring for someone who comes in as a paid guest is astronomically different. The other comment that they made was that if these were separated, because this, the total bonding amount would be divided among a number of projects, that that would be perhaps better, because large bonds are harder to get and the number of people that can get them now are, are reduced because of the number of defaults in the recent past. And also, we're joining kind of dissimilar projects, and I understand the thought of doing it as a single bid, because it's a lot more convenient to manage the project. But someone who does general construction and electrical and mechanical installations is usually not a corrosion specialist. They may be doing sprinkler systems, but on the other hand, they may not. And the, the method by which we build, bid the nuts, bolts, and fasteners, didn't leave a, a large zone of comfort, I think, with the bidders. And the, the method that Larry spoke about earlier holds some promise with regard to that. So, I wouldn't say to you tonight that I wouldn't support it in two weeks. I'd just tell you that I would rather have two weeks to do a little more research and to ask the city staff to contract our original estimator and to contract our community center supervisor, super, building superintendent, and get a little more opinion before I give away $200,000 of, of our city money.
Councilmember Costa?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. If I could ask the staff just a few more questions. I believe the question about the overestimation was already addressed, and I was wondering if somebody could come up to clarify why they had believed that there was an overestimation on our, excuse me, an underestimation on our part for that amount.
I will try to answer a couple of those questions. And the first one I'll clarify is this. I don't truly believe we'd be having this conversation if we had two more bids and they were all higher than the one we have tonight. We would be forgetting about that estimate. Quite often, estimates come in high, they come in low. The senior center, we were lucky, our estimate was higher than the bid we got, and we were very happy. We didn't argue about the mistakes that the estimator made on that one, because we got a lower bid. Tonight, we're dealing with a bid that's higher than an estimate than an estimator did in April. Remember that. He did it in April. We bid it in November. There's good reasons for the market to change in that particular industry. The part, the steel that was required for the ducking, et cetera, could be higher or lower. So, keep that in mind. Craig did call the estimator, and his comment was, "Well, you have a real estimate now. You have a bid. That's the estimate. If I had to estimate it today, I have his estimate. That's what it'd be." So, again, will we get a lower bid is the question. I'm not sure that we will, but if that's what we want to do, we can put it back out. To clarify another thing, Mayor Lynn, you mentioned to have our guy that's down there watching the work of the senior center. Well, his firm is the one that did the constructibility on this project, Harrison Associates. So, it was the same people. I don't know that Dan helped them in particular in this, but the engineers for his company were the ones that looked at it. So, we do have those two. Does that...
Can you also address... Can you also address liability during construction?
Excuse me?
Insurance liability during construction? That's something that Mr. Lynn had spoken about as, as a worry?
Well, I'm not sure the price of insurance for the contractor that bid on it. We'd have to talk to Smith Electric, but they're required to have insurance, of course, liability insurance. Bonding to one big project is high and hard to get, correct? If you had three smaller projects, the bonding would be easier to get for smaller companies. That's correct.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Mayor, I move that we accept staff recommendation number one for this project.
I second.
It's been moved and seconded. Is there further discussion?
I'd just like to make a final comment, that I have to agree with you that on our first evening, it's difficult to award such a large project or in, in such a large dollar amount. Unfortunately, it's a necessary evil, as somebody stated, for a decision that we had no involvement with. My fear also is that the corrosion only gets worse with time, and to address it as soon as possible would be our best option.
I guess I would agree with you if tonight was the last chance we had to do this, but since we have two weeks, I, I couldn't agree on that. Is there any other discussion? All right, let's go ahead and put a vote in. And that passes three to two. All right.